After 7:00 PM. 7:52. I would like to first begin the town meeting, this last town meeting of the year 2012, the year of our town's 300th anniversary. I thought it would be appropriate to ask the members of the Addington Tricentennial Committee to lead us in our pledge of allegiance here tonight. And immediately after the pledge, I'm going to ask Co-Chair Janie Prost to say a few words about the year-long celebration and she'll introduce the members at that time. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to the proud members of our Tricentennial Committee and ask them please rise in pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce our co-chairs of the Tricentennial Committee, Jan Prost.
The meeting folks and glad you're here to stay. This will be free. After we put it on paper, we shall proceed to the room. The Tricentennial Committee would like to take a moment to thank everyone who supported our efforts. Our committee was appointed by the Board of Selectmen in the summer of 2010 and has held meetings twice a month for over two years. From a steering committee of thirteen, another sixteen events committees were formed through numerous volunteers assisting in the planning. Our events were made possible by the generous financial support of our platinum, gold, silver, and bronze sponsors, our biggest donation from the 2011 Christmas House Tour Committee, the Town of Addington, and everyone who made a donation or attended one of our fundraisers. Because of this support, most of our events were at a very reasonable cost, or in the case of the Old Abington Country Field Day, a no-cost family event. The climax of our year-long celebration was the publication of our commemorative book, titled "Celebrating 300 Years, 1712 to 2012: A Shared History, Addington, Rockland, and Whitman." The 240-page book captures the history of Addington, East Addington, now Rockland, and South Addington, now Whitman, from before its incorporation in 1712 to present day. It was written by residents of all three towns. The book includes a color section of the Student 30 for the 300, which was open to all pre-K through grade 12 students in the tri-town area. Students could submit an original drawing, a photograph, short story, or poem about a favorite old Abington place or event. Thirty works were chosen and are published in the book. The book also includes thirty-two colored pages of all of our events, from the very first trivia night in January 2011, through the rededication ceremony and civil war encampment held at Island Road in September. Thanks to our many advertisers and sponsors, the cost of the book is $20. Copies of the books are available tonight in the lobby. They may also be purchased in Addington at Decker's Road, the library, the town clerk's office, Bailey's Garage, and at the senior center. I would like to acknowledge our steering committee members and thank them for all their hard work. Frank Genowitz, the sheriff of 300, was also the chair of Addington's 275th. Jack Bailey served as co-chair along with me. Robin Colonel, who is not able to be here tonight, was secretary. Phyllis Wheatley is here, she was our correspondent secretary. Robert J. Kelly Jr., who also was on the 275th, served as our treasurer. Nancy Reed, who is here, served as our publicist and also served on the 275th. Mike Franny was the selectmen's liaison, so we went together when we had anything in common. Kathy Bailey, Joe Shay, Doug Elwick, Russell Wheatley, and Rita Wing rounded out the crowd. So I'd like to thank Mike.
Thank you, Jan, members of the press. If you could just stand right there for a second, Mr. and all the Tricentennial Committee members. Chairman, I'd like to recognize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the rest of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, John. As Jan just went through, these folks put in a tremendous amount of work over the last few years. They did an outstanding job. And Jan will come into our meetings after every event on a monthly basis and tell us what is happening. And our response is always, every event kept getting better and better than I think that was the case. So, as a result of all your hard work, we would like to give the Tricentennial Committee Addington's best. So if you could just read the proclamation. Whereas the Tricentennial Committee was established by a vote at the October 18, 2010 special town meeting to promote the 300th birthday of the Town of Addington, whereas the Tricentennial Committee officially commenced meeting on October 27, 2010, planning events for fundraising and activities to celebrate the town's 300th birthday involving countless hours of meetings and the formation of many sub-commissions to accomplish these tasks. Whereas the Tricentennial Committee successfully raised funds through the following well-attended endeavors: the Christmas House Tour, a golf tournament, two trivia nights, Mayor for a Day, a commemorative stamp day at the North Addington Post Office, and selling ads for the booklet. Specially-designed memorabilia were available throughout the events held and the orders taken for the much anticipated 300th birthday commemorative book. Whereas the Tricentennial Committee conducted a half marathon in the road race series, including the towns of Rockland and Whitman, which were originally part of Addington. Whereas the Tricentennial Committee hosted many celebratory events, including the Old Abington Tricentennial Gala, with many people attending, Imperial Taya, the Tricentennial Art Show, displaying the talents of many local artists and craftsmen, an economical church service held at the United Church of Christ, with music provided by the specially-formed town choir, the 300th Birthday Parade held on June 10, 2012, the Old Abington Country Field Day, which was a success despite the rain, culminating in a spectacular high-wish display, the Fox 25 zip trip at the Monon Non-Air Memorial Complex, the Old Abington Tri-Town Firefighters Parade mustered with participation from Rockland, Whitman, and Addington, followed by a band concert. Whereas the Tricentennial Committee arranged a civil war living history encampment reenacted on September 21 through September 23 at Island Road, with a rededication of a memorial action voyage, bringing the 300th birthday celebration to a close. Now therefore, we, the Addington Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the Town of Addington and its residents, recognize with pride the many accomplishments of the Tricentennial Committee. We offer our gratitude and appreciation on bringing such a memorable celebration to fruition, which could not have taken place without the unselfish dedication of so many hard-working volunteers giving so generously of their time and talents. By the Board of Selectmen, Andrew Burbite, Michael Franny, Kevin Donovan, Kenneth Foyle, Thomas Dean. Thank you again for all the work.
Good job, well done. Yes, this was a surprise. Also helped me get a board name ahead of the whole committee. I was going to give a, I was going to give a book to the 150th person who walked in here tonight, but it was my brother Ed, and I decided to withdraw the honor. It was going to be a Christmas present for my mother. Everyone should have picked up a copy of the warrant and the extra information copied therein from the back tables. If you haven't picked up one, you should, because it will be followed along. It's entitled in the top, "The Combined Warrant Recommendation and Motion for Use of the November 14 Continuing Session of the October 29 Special Town Meeting." And just for the record, I wanted to acknowledge that the warrant was to be delivered to the residents of Addington in accordance with the town charter and town bylaws. Just, I'm going to skip over a couple things, but just want to go over some of the basic rules of the meeting. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and the moderator will recognize you at any moment. Please use the microphone, give your name and address before you start speaking. So the town clerk, Linda Adams, who is to the right of my left, can promptly report the minutes of the town meeting. Please make sure to keep all your comments and questions relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed and not make any personal attacks or bring any personalities into the debating of an issue. If I believe that anyone is straying from the issues, I'll direct that to taking a limited portion of the debate to the issue. We also ask that you eliminate your time for the microphone, I'll try to do the same myself. A motion to move the question will be taken up as any other motion made from the floor. For those of you who are new to the town meeting, a motion to move the question is a request to end all the debate and to move directly to a vote and not to pursue a got-to-go. But to move the question, a person must be recognized by the moderator and then make the motion to move the question immediately. You can't take the microphone, recite your opinion, and then try to shut off others' debate by moving the question in your direction. Please also understand that I reserve the right to follow the motion to move the question out of order if I believe that it's prematurely ending the debate. Only registered voters may vote here at our town meeting, our legislative body of the Town of Addington. If you're not a registered voter or if you're not a resident, I ask that please sit in the far ends of the bleachers and under the signs marked "Non-Residents and Registered Voters." I'm going to appoint some tellers if you need any counts. Leo Donovan will be counting anyone on the bleachers to my left. Wayne Smith, if you would, will count all the chairs in the area that you're sitting, along with, actually, just the chairs. Lavigne Keel, if you would count those in this section of chairs, plus the finance committee and Mr. Esar, Russ Esar, if you would count those in that bleachers, if we count as needed. I personally do want to appoint a deputy moderator for the evening. I ask to approve the appointment of Quod Kelly as our deputy moderator. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no.
No.
The ayes have a. Understanding that many of you are Vegas citizens, we ask that you turn down your cellphones or turn your rums off, and please take any telephone conversations out into the lobby. I also, before we go, I wanted to, before we get going, I wanted to recognize and thank our state representative Jeff Deal, who is here in the House, who's been talking to a lot of the residents tonight. We appreciate Jeff for working with the Town of Addington. And I'd love to welcome, of course, our United States Congressman Steve Lynch, who took time out of his busy schedule to be here in the Town of Addington, who greatly appreciate your continued support for the residents of our town. Thank you all, Jeff. At this time, I would like to introduce the Finance Committee Chairperson, Maureen Jansen. I'd ask that she introduce the remaining members of the Finance Committee, and I'd like to recognize our town manager, John D'Agostino, for his opening summary.
Thank you, thank you, John. And thank you all for coming tonight and, or staying as we, as we're ready to get on the floor. I'd also like to thank all the town employees, town employees, the finance team, the mayor's committee members who are here, the board of selectmen and the town manager for putting all these materials together so that we could have tonight's meeting. And obviously, they need to shine, and the two, and the town clerk. Real quick, I just want to introduce the, the Finance Committee. Not many people in the order, but we have Sean Tyler, Sarah Christopher, Stephanie Eastwick, Cindy Whiting, Rick Franny, Chad Lovett, Tom Cook, and of course, our recording secretary, Debbie.
Mr. D'Agostino. Moderator, I'd like to recognize town manager John D'Agostino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tonight, we're going to spend some money. We're going to put some money away in the state county account. And I would like to summarize where we are with respect to our financing. If you open your booklet, turn to, open up the first page, turn to G to the right, you will see that we have a big cash certification number of $734,000. So we're going to spend some of that money, actually, while we're going to have money going into the capital trust account, that's our second section. And we're going to balance approximately $385 in that account. We've moved down to healthcare appropriation, and I've spent some time talking about that. We're going to take a little over $179,089.64, and we're going to fund some of the more our political funds through that appropriation. And then lastly, we're going to raise the appropriation of money, and this will help us set our tax rate. We are taking that money from new growth. When we started the budget back in, if it were May or back here, or this year, actually, we estimated new growth at $200,000. Now, that's our budget. New growth came in, about $244,000. So of the $44,000 difference, we're going to spend $43,203.09. I want to talk a little bit about what we're going to do tonight in relationship to stabilization. When I came to the town, we had $1,000 in stabilization. As of today, we have $632,656.20. Tonight, we're proposing to deposit $400,590 into stabilization. That'll give us a total of $1,033,246.20. Now, while that may sound like a lot of money, the actual percentage that we should have in stabilization is between 5% to 8% of our operating budget. Our operating budget is approximately $48 million. So we have a little ways to go, but we're certainly heading in the right direction. And as we look to our future projects, that is going to be an issue for us if we decide to go off the bond for large capital projects. So we're financially in good shape, we're moving in the right direction from that perspective. Tonight's agenda will certainly give us some additional money. I'll talk a little bit about healthcare. Would we fashion the budget back in May? We estimated that our savings in healthcare would be about 13%. In other words, we estimated that we could save $206,225, approximately 13.5%. We're spending an additional $179,189.64, which means that our total healthcare savings of the money we went to plan is up. Save the town $385,414.64. So again, because we're saving money, we're able to use those monies in different areas of the budget without impacting the tax rate, we're looking for any kind of an override. And the Finance Committee, the town manager, the board of selectmen are all in agreement with respect to the financial articles as they have been set forth in the motions that the Finance Committee will go through tonight. I'd like to thank the Finance Committee and the board of selectmen for working cooperatively to get to a consensus budget for the balance of the fiscal year. So thank you very much.
We now move right on to Article 1, which is actually broken up into three subsections, Article 1A, 1B, and 1C. 1A, we see the town vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $50435 to stabilization. 1B is to transfer a total of $344,212 to the Capital Improvement Trust Fund. Article 1C will be to see the town vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $16,681 to the Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Moderator recognizes the Chairperson of the Finance Committee, Maureen Jansen, for the motion.
Motion 1A, the Finance Committee moves at the town vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $400,590 to the stabilization fund.
Got that 1B on board.
Motion 1B, the Finance Committee moves at the town vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $311,932 and $30,000 from the health insurance line item 00191405175.0500, and to raise and appropriate $2,270 to the Capital Improvement Trust Fund. Motion 1C, the Finance Committee moves at the town vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $16,681 to the Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Thank you, Ms. Jansen. Are there any questions on Article, on motions on 1A, 1B, or 1C? If you're all by the Finance Committee. If not, putting money into or out of the stabilization fund, as you see in the notes, requires a two-thirds vote. So I'm going to, if there's no debate, I'm going to ask for all three of these motions to be voted at the same time, but it will require at least a two-thirds vote to pass all three together. If there's nothing to be heard, all those in favor of approving motion, Article 1A, 1B, 1C, as motion by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, it's unanimous, thank you. 1A, 1B, 1C, all pass. Moving to Article 2, we see the town vote to raise and appropriate transfer from the funds $1,000, $105,565 to funding FY 2013 property, casualty, liability, and workers' compensation expenses, take any other action. Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves at the town vote to transfer from health insurance line item 001, the sum of $105,565 for funding the FY 2013 property, casualty, liability, and workers' compensation expenses.
Thank you. Any questions, anything to be heard on Article 2? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion under Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, related to Article 2, I just want to let you know, I ask that you please keep in mind Mike Trokus and his family and thoughts and prayers as Mike continues to fight his battle with acute lymphoblastic leukemia. Although, you should note that although Mike was allowed to leave the hospital and attend his mother's funeral and attended a Greenway football game just a few weeks ago, he recently suffered a setback during his recuperation from the cortisone transplant procedure and remains under the treatment of the nurses and doctors of Beth Israel, Boston. A fundraiser is being held for the Trokus family on this Saturday night holiday in Rockland, and donations are being honored, great to the executive at Adam Bank. I spoke to Mike today, and he wanted me to tell you that he thinks Addington is the best place on earth, and he greatly appreciates the support that people have given to him and his family. Moving on to Article 3, and Mike thanks you. Thinking of you, Mike. Article 3, before I mention Article 3, I need to make a public announcement. Our town clerk, Linda Adams, notified the Board of Selectmen last week that after much soul-searching, she will be retiring as of next Friday on November 23rd. Linda has served the residents of Addington for eight years, our town clerk, and I think you'll agree that she's done so in a professional, amiable, compassionate manner throughout her tenure. We admire the skills that Linda has always exhibited during the local, state, and national elections, during our town meetings, and on a daily basis from her office just inside the main entrance to our town offices. Linda, we will all miss you and your compassion and work ethic, but we all wish you and your family all the best during your upcoming years of retirement. Thank you, and thank you, Linda. Article 3, we see the town vote to increase the salary of the town clerk pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 108, by raising and appropriating a transfer in through the funds of $3,412 for such purposes, take any other action, or if there is.
The Finance Committee moves at the town vote to increase the salary of the town clerk by a sum of $3,412, and as funding, therefore, to raise and appropriate said sum.
As an elected official, raises must be approved by town meeting, by two-thirds vote. Is there anything to be heard on approving Article 3 as presented? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 3, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, it's unanimous. Article 4, we see the town vote to transfer from the Capital Improvement Trust Fund to a free cash or otherwise provide such sums that are necessary to fund the FY 2013 capital plan and purposes and in the amounts in the column entitled "Town Manager Recommended," set forth below, take any other action, relative thereto. And before you grant, give the motion, on the page afterward we just read, you'll see the chart of what is to be purchased if we were approved on Article 4, we'll be looking at all the items in the right-hand column only, "Town Manager Recommended." Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves at the town vote to transfer from the Capital Improvement Trust Fund, a sum of $343,827, and from free cash, to a sum of $5,000, and authorize capital projects and acquisitions, including all costs incidental and related thereto, for the purpose, for the purpose and in the amount set forth in the column entitled "Town Manager Recommended," as set forth in the warrant under Article 4.
Thank you. Is there anything to be heard on Article 4? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion under Article 4 presented by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, unanimous. Article 5, we see the town vote to raise and appropriate transfer in the funds of $1,800 for the purpose of updating the clarification of the charter of the town of general code, or take any other action, or if there is.
The Finance Committee moves at the town vote to transfer from health insurance line item 00191405175.0500, the sum of $1,800, for the purpose of updating the clarification of the charter of the bylaws of the town.
Is there anything to be heard on Article 5? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion under Article 5, as presented by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, it's unanimous. Article 6, we see the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 15L of the April 2nd, 2012, at our town meeting, and the text is there below, as shown in the warrant and in the handout today. Basically, it is just updating and changing the word to allow more efficient and less costly means of mailing notices of upcoming town meetings to the residents. Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves to amend the vote taken under Article 15L of the April 2nd, home of the town meeting, amending the town bylaws so that the provisions of Section 152.2C of the town bylaws provide as set forth under Article 6 as pointed in the warrant.
Is there anything to be heard on Article 6? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, it's unanimous, thank you. Article 7, we see the town vote to accept provisions of Master General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, and a half, for the purpose of establishing an ambulance enterprise fund, effectively of 2013, and to establish the budget of that fund, as shown here in the warrant. Maureen.
I just want to let you know, the motion has been slightly revised, as of tonight, by the town council, so it's a little different than what you're seeing in the book. This is the motion under Article 7. The Finance Committee moves at the town vote to accept provisions of General Law, Seat 44, Section 53 and a half, for the purpose of establishing an ambulance enterprise fund, and further to establish the FY 2013 Enterprise Fund budget by appropriating $480,000 for salaries and compensation, and $65,000 for expenses, and further to fund said budget and $70,000 for indirect costs already appropriated in the general fund, with enterprise receipts consisting of $615,000 from the ambulance receipts reserve account.
Thank you. So we'll be transferring $615,000 in ambulance reserve accounts. Is there anything to be heard on the motion under Article 7? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Article 8, we see the town vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, including the sewer enterprise funds, a sum of $16,375,000, to fund the implement of retroactive cost items for the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the American Federation of State County and its employees, highway sewer park and recreation for the period beginning July 1, 2010, and ending July 30, 2012, and related increases to base salaries, for the purpose we are taking any other action, or if there is. Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves at the town vote to fund and implement the retroactive cost items of collective bargaining agreement between the town and the IAF, SE, and the highway sewer park recreation, for the period beginning July 1, 2010, and ending June 30, 2012, by appropriating the total sum of $7,527.09, of which $4,333.09 shall be raised and appropriated, and $3,194.09 transferred from sewer enterprise fund retained earning, and to fund the related increases, increases to base salaries for the current fiscal year by appropriating the sum of $8,848, with $5,744.09 to be raised and appropriated, and $3,103.09 to be transferred from the sewer enterprise fund retained earning.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there anything to be heard on Article 8? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 8 pursuant to the motion made by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If both say no, the ayes have a unanimous. Article 9, despite standing on Article 9, there'd be no action taken on Article 9, as the parties are close to resolution of the contract, or they have not come to completion or resolving the contract. So unless anyone has a motion, we're going to move on and go right to Article 10. So, here are the numbers for Article 10. We see the town vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, including the ambulance receipts reserve account slash ambulance enterprise fund, a sum of $156,468.59, to fund and implement retroactive recovery cost items of collective bargaining between the town and the firefighters union for the period of July 1, 2012, and ending July 1, 2015, take any other action, or if there is. Maureen.
Okay, we're going with the motion, for the motion under Article 10 and Article 7, please.
So if you turn the page, it'll be the second version of the motion. The only difference between the motions was the source of funds. And Maureen will now read the correct motion with the correct source of funds.
The Finance Committee moves at the town vote to fund and implement the retroactive and current cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the IAF, Local 2080, for the period beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2015, and including amounts under a related agreement for the period of July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2012, by appropriating a total sum of $129,781.23, as follows. For FY 2012, retroactive, and FY 2013 costs, to transfer $40,824.64, from health insurance line item 00191405175.0500, and $80,000 from the ambulance enterprise fund, and for related increases to the base salaries for the current fiscal year, raise and appropriate
Thank you, Maureen. Would anyone like to repeat that? No, great. Anything to be heard on Article 10? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion under Article 10, please signify Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those say no, it's unanimous. Moving on to Article Eleven, you should skip over a few pages, pages that improve the copy of the contract approved. Article Eleven, see if the town will raise appropriate transfer from available funds in some of $16,245.60 to fund energy improvements by national-grade town buildings, with the goal of realizing estimated annual energy savings of $39,734.42, including the Woodsdale Beaver Brook Center, Norah, Corleone High Schools, fire stations, library, police station, council and agent, sewer department, and town hall, and taking any other action relative thereto. Maureen.
Motion under Article Eleven, vice committee moves that the town vote to raise appropriate the sum of $16,245.60 to fund energy improvements by national-grade town buildings, including Woodsdale, Beaver Brook Center, Norah, Corleone, and High School, fire stations, library, police stations, council and agent, sewer department, and town hall.
Is there anything to be heard on Article Eleven? If not, are those in favor of approving Article Eleven as motion by the vice committee? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those say no, it's unanimous. Article Twelve, see if the town will raise appropriate transfer from available funds in some $1,000 for hazardous waste day expenses or taking any other action relative thereto. Maureen.
Vice committee moves that the town vote to transfer from health insurance line item 0019140051750500, the sum of $1,000 for hazardous waste day expenses.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there anything to be heard on Article Twelve? If not, are those in favor of approving Article Twelve as motion by the vice committee? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those say no, it's unanimous. Article Thirteen, see if the town will raise appropriate transfer from available funds in some $4,540, the ambulance health accounts for expenses, such appropriation to supplement an equivalent amount of state funding for such purposes or take any other action relative thereto.
The vice committee moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,270 for Abington Cultural Council programs and expenses.
So the vice committee recommends approval of this article by motioning $2,270 for this article. Is there anything to be heard on this article, Thirteen? If not, are those in favor of the motion presented by the vice committee? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those say no, it's unanimous. Article Fourteen, I'm going to recuse myself from Article Fourteen and ask of the deputy moderator, Robert J. Kelly, Jr., CPA, please come.
Article Fourteen, see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or otherwise for general municipal purposes and accept the deed and be simple to a 4.9 acre parcel located off Robles Street, nearly old land, to read the specifics of where it is and register. Ms. Johnson.
The vice committee moves that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or otherwise for general municipal purposes and accept the deed and be simple for a 4.9 acre parcel, more or less, located off Robles Street in Abington, and shown as Lot A on a plan titled Estate of Kenneth M. Newcomb, dated September 28, 2011, and prepared by Kelly Engineering Group Incorporated, recorded in the registry of deeds as Book Fifty-Six, Page 1172.
Any discussion on Article Fourteen? No discussion? Are those in favor, please express your vote.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Article Fifty, see if the town vote to rescind the following borrowing authorization for the projects in the amount specified. You know, see, there are two projects, the Jefferson Street water tank construction for $30,906, and the Woodsdale school green repair project for $1,031,488. Maureen.
The vice committee moves to rescind the borrowing authorizations as printed in the warrant under Article Fifty.
Thank you, Maureen. While standing, based on lower credit card payment, approve our borrowing by doing this clean of the books. Are all those in favor of approving Article Fifty? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those say no, it's unanimous. Article Sixteen, see if the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to petition the general court for legislation providing additional state aid directly to the town of Abington or other state funding or otherwise reallocating existing state funding for the purposes of maintaining, upgrading, or improving essential components of local, regional, and state-controlled transportation infrastructure located in the town of Abington, taking any other action relative thereto. Maureen.
The vice committee moves to approve Article Sixteen and authorize the board of selectmen to petition the general court whether informally through forwarding of a certified copy of the vote taken hereunder, or more formally through the filing of special legislation for such purposes, in whatever form the board of selectmen deems appropriate for additional funding for local, regional, and state-controlled transportation infrastructure located in the town of Abington, and to affirm that such additional funding is of critical importance to the town of Abington at the time of this.
Thank you, Maureen. Article actually arose from a suggestion of liaison to the MBTA's understanding of that, or is it, I don't see him in Texas tonight. If he was, I was going to ask him, would you like to speak? Is there anyone who would like to speak on Article Sixteen? If not, are those in favor of approving Article Sixteen? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those say no, it's unanimous. Article Seventeen, I'll recuse myself from Article Seventeen having spoken on this matter previously. Before we do, I want to send a shout out, and, you know, we, all the work we do here, I want to thank everybody who puts all the work into the town meetings, and especially to the people who attend. We greatly appreciate you doing the town business. I also think it's important that we congratulate, especially the younger residents of this town, they do great things. So I want to take a minute to congratulate the Abington High School ball team, qualified to determine the fifth year in a row. The Abington High School, oh wait, there's four. The Abington High School girls' soccer team, who went all the way to the self-sectional semifinals, where they lost one to nothing over last year's state champions. This year's girls' soccer team, I believe, is the best season in the history of Abington High School's girls' soccer program. And thirdly and last, congratulations to the Greenway football team, who are currently undefeated with a perfect ten no record. They will play their 102nd Thanksgiving Day game at Rumens High School at 10 o'clock on Thanksgiving morning. And as 2012 South Shore League champions, they will now move on to play the MIA Division Four playoffs on Tuesday evening, November 27th. The time and location of that playoff game will be announced today after Thanksgiving. So I'd like to congratulate our student athletes, our residents, our kids of Abington for the fine work they do.
Article Seventeen, see if the town will amend the town bylaw by opting a new bylaw establishing service standards for conduct of town employees in office as follows, and further to authorize the town clerk to sign said bylaw, apartment number consistent to the number of existing said town bylaws. I'm not going to read the rest of it. I'm going to read Article Seventeen.
The vice committee moves to pass over this article.
Vice committee making motion to pass over Article Seventeen. Right, is that my vote?
I'd like to make the recommendation from the vice committee. The vice committee has seen this article and number of versions a few times in, as you can, our town meeting. And the first part of this article attempts to set up a bylaw which requires regular municipal employees to comply with the already established Massachusetts state office law, for which municipal employees are already required to comply. There's no valid reason for the town to have a bylaw which just requires employees to comply with the state law. Vice committee also feels that the additional rider detailed by this bylaw does not add substance to the statute or that require ethical behavior of municipal employees, both special and regular volunteer and paid. Additionally, the vice committee feels that the inclusion of the additional notice of appearance or representation violation that's required by this bylaw is one of record-keeping and in fact not part of the letter. Lastly, we feel that this bylaw could potentially keep volunteers from offering their time to the town due to the additional seen and unseen pitfalls, including the dominant litigations and questionable unsubstantiated accusations of benefits violations.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anything else to be said now? Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Captain Creighton. I'm a member of the Abington Bylaw Review Committee. I, the bylaw committee is a three-member committee, made up of myself, Jean Kelly, and Anne Welch, and we've been meeting for well over a year and recommended a number of bylaws to this town meeting. This is the last one we have tonight for you to review and consider. Our board unanimously is in favor of this bylaw and asks you to consider approving it tonight. There are two parts to the proposed bylaw. The first half of the bylaw is consistent with and parallel statewide. It is intended to reemphasize the importance of ethics in our local government. The second half of the bylaw is new and affects only a special class of special municipal employees, it's called special municipal employee status, and it requires that a special municipal employee file a notice of inheritance when someone on board or committee appears in person before another town board or official on behalf of others. So I'm going to just take a moment to explain the difference between a regular municipal employee and a special municipal employee. A regular municipal employee includes any person appointed, hired, elected, whether compensated or uncompensated. So this includes paid and unpaid officials and members of boards and commissions. A municipal employee may not represent any person other than themselves or a family member in any matter in which the town has a direct and substantial interest. Such matters would include all matters intended for a board committee or employee of the town, and any matter in which the town is actually a party, is to address, divide, loyalty is your first loyalty as a municipal employee should be to the town. The board of selectmen may designate positions as special municipal employee. They are special, they can be unpaid if they're unpaid, there's three conditions, if they're unpaid, or if the position allows additional work during regular hours, or the position involves less than 840 hours a year. Only special municipal employees may appear before other boards and committees and employees of the town on behalf of another. Special municipal status is a privilege and not a right, and the selectmen get to determine by their own vote of the board which position will be given that status. This particular bylaw applies to that special municipal employee status, and it adds a notice of appearance requirement. It's a piece of paper that when a special municipal employee intends to appear in person before a town entity on behalf of someone else other than themselves or a family member, the special municipal employee would file a notice with the town clerk in form of one page four. The notice required would not be required to be filed each time he appeared, simply once with respect to each matter, and they would list the boards they're going to appear before. The notice does not require approval or acceptance by the town board or any other entity. It does not stop anyone from conducting their business, it is an informational form. The goal of the second half of the bylaw is to provide additional information about whether special municipal employees are representing others before the town, and to provide more transparency to the residents of Abington. The informational form may be used by a variety of people, the general public, the residents of town, to be informed, the board of selectmen, and their review of special municipal status, or someone seeking action from a board or committee, for example, to let them know that the person representing the other side is a municipal employee. In summary, the first half of the bylaw, we emphasized the importance of existing state office law, and the second half requires only special municipal employees to file a notice with the town clerk when they have planned to appear in person for another board or multiple courts on behalf of someone other than themselves or their immediate member. The bylaw committee is unanimously in support of the proposed bylaw and believes that it is a benefit to the residents of town of Abington, adding an ethics provision in our bylaws which is an important reminder to all of our town officials that Abington values ethics of government. I would encourage all of you to vote in favor of this bylaw. The bylaw review committees, please afford a positive motion to approve Article Seventeen as presented in the warrant. Thank you.
It's very good to call the motion, correct?
At present time, we have a conflict of interest policy that guides the town through all types of stuff. I think the new ethics article will be a major step backwards. We don't need more government intervention. We don't need a policeman standing by our shoulders every time we try to conduct any type of business on behalf of the town. We have a difficult time getting enough people to have a forum tonight. All this is going to do is discourage people from showing up at town meeting, discourage people for joining boards that probably have no authority at all, and I think it's just like a sham to require this type of thing when we have a conflict of interest, that anybody can file a complaint anonymously, like they did with a couple of pocket record missions a few years ago, which was just like an embarrassment. So I think this is like a major step backwards, we don't need it. If somebody steps on the line, everybody will find out about it quickly, it'll be on the paper, da-da-da-da, and that will be the way to supervise proper ethical behavior as it has over the past number of years. So I recommend that we turn this down. Thank you, Ms. Mallon.
Please identify yourself for the record. John, we have a little bit of a right. My understanding of this is if you are not, if you're elected official on the Land Board Trustees, I'm not granted special status, I can't appear as a member of Abington Soccer in front of any other board.
First of all, you need to be a special municipal employee to appear for, on behalf of others. If you are ungranted a special municipal status, then that's not what this is about. This is just about filing a form if you are a special municipal employee.
Okay, what happens if, as a library trustee, I am not? If the board of selectmen don't, if I am?
If you're not, I will let Mr. Fair answer the question specifically, but this bylaw doesn't apply to you.
So as a town employee, as a town elected official, also a member of the Abington Soccer Board, if I'm not a special municipal employee, this doesn't apply to me, or it doesn't?
Mr. Fair? Thank you, moderator. Let me just clarify something, because the bylaw itself is not changing the law, so to the extent that there is a prohibition against municipal employees being a special or otherwise, this isn't adding an additional, a specific, an additional restriction on what the law already restricts. So in other words, if you adopt the bylaw, the prohibitions that exist in law are already in existence whether you are a municipal. So I don't want anybody to be under the mistaken impression that by adopting this bylaw, that what you can now do is give them the longer be able to, because that's not going to be the case. It's a little difficult to give a, you know, opinion on anybody's specific potential conflict of interest here on the greater information, so I'm not sure that I can, in the timeframe, really give you a definitive opinion on your particular situation. Adoption of bylaw isn't going to change that. In other words, if you can't do it now, you're still not going to be able to whether this bylaw has it. The additional component that this bylaw presents is really a notice requirement, and really, and that's the second component that Mr. Creighton was referring to, and what that would require is certain circumstances for a special municipal employee who would have an obligation to just file a notice with the town clerk about the representation and relationship that might exist. So it's more or less just putting people on notice, it's not anything subject to approval, it's just putting somebody on notice.
All right, so as an elected official, I don't know my status, so I find it hard to vote on any law that would impact me, because I don't know where I stand. Like you said, it doesn't change anything. I agree, I think it's a big job to prove that, you know, why you have a big work.
I can answer that question, so are library trustees, special municipal employees?
Mrs. Davis, can I?
Yes, yes. We're a special municipal player.
So he has to follow, he had to represent himself, right? You don't need to answer my questions unless someone else needs to know. It sounds like a whole lot of big work to accomplish what the state already does for us. Thank you.
Can you say your name and the market?
Good evening, Patrick Spalston, one of the group, a member of the vice committee, speaking on behalf of myself. I'll keep it simple. I read this as an ordinance or a local law to inform a state state law. So I see this as, I'm not going to. So I see this as neither encouraging, complimenting folks for participating in town government, I see it as a need to disambiguate folks from participating in town government. And frankly, NGL already supports ethics, requires ethics of municipal, special or regular employees, I don't see the need to actually have something that is neither transparent but something that seems to be more cumbersome and piqued progress to government. We don't need more governmental government. Thank you.
I think there might be a little confusion here. Let's go back some years, maybe seven, eight, ten years ago. No one had special municipal retention status in the town of Allington that sometime thereafter was granted to every board or committee. This is not necessarily about special municipal retention status. What this is saying is that if you decide that you want to represent somebody for a board or committee, and you are an elected official, or you are an employee of the town, that you file a disclosure is very sensitive. I think that this leads to a level of transparency, and it allows for those individuals who want to be accountable, such as elected officials, to also be accountable by signing that they are representing somebody before a board or committee. It's about accountability in government, and it's about transparency in government, both of which elected officials must maintain any.
Mr. Davis, yeah? I shall not be bothered.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Henry Caro, twenty-seventh Central Street. As many of you probably know, I've been serving on the Board of Library Trustees for over twenty-five years now, as elected member of a nine-member board, the largest board in this town, your Board of Library Trustees. Probably have served with over forty other trustees during those years, and virtually every one of them served in many, many capacities in this town, as volunteers, as employees, and it would discourage people from coming forward to do this. I absolutely urge you to take the Finance Committee's recommendation and vote that it passes over this article. And I do appreciate the work of the committee that put the bylaws together, but in this case, I think that this one should be passed over by them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, I just wanted to just get back to the gentleman who spoke a few months ago about the question about whether I can appear and speak regarding Allington Soccer. One thing that people need to understand is what the law currently includes is a prohibition against municipal employees representing anyone other than themselves in matters whose the town has a direct and substantial interest in, unless they comply with the provisions of compromise. Something along the lines of a municipal, a member of the municipal board that wants to get out and speak on something that's deep into their hearts, for example, the Avenue Soccer, there's no prohibition in law against that. This is due to if you're officially representing somebody in a matter that is before a town board. So just to use maybe a simple example, if I'm an owner of a landscape design company and I'm on the conservation committee and I have to appear before the conservation committee and to represent a client on some matter, that's where there are certain prohibitions in the law that would prevent me from doing that. If I'm a special municipal employee, I may be able to do that, however, what this bylaw would do is now say, I need to file a disclosure notice so that everybody is aware of the fact that I'm on the conservation committee and I'm also appearing before the conservation committee, so that the members of the public understand what everybody's relationships are within that sort of range of activity that's going on.
Anyone else like to speak on the article? Please identify yourself for the record.
I have a couple of questions, not really statements, so I was just wondering, what is our policy now on this or something? Forgive me for not being as familiar with the charter of the bylaw.
Right now, there is no ethics bylaw or ethics policy in our charter or in our bylaws. There are state provisions, like as you serve on the Finance Committee, you know that, because the selectmen are reviewing the special municipal status and they've developed a policy. And I think they're trying to come up with some way to address that on a more regular basis, but this is specifically, we felt pretty strongly that ethics is important, and that it needed to be read on that side.
So my craft and thinking that, I've been in meetings before where people have said that I have to step down because I'm dealing in those negotiations, so there's no written...
The state ethics provision is probably what they were referring to when they said they felt like they needed to step down.
Is there a list of employees that fall under the special employees or...
Yes. The town clerk's obviously painted, and it's pretty much most of the fourth that existed in two thousand and five, which was the first time we ever actually had that many employees as special municipal employees. Before that, we seem to have, you know, we seem to have volunteers rather equipped with that status.
And then, when you file the form, who has access to that information?
Is that public record? It would be considered a public record if filed with the town clerk. There's two ways, if you have a conflict that requires public notification through the state office law, you have filed that. But this particular one, if you are actually physically appearing before another board, you know, you're saying you're on the school building committee and you're going to go in front of a larger board to represent someone else, you would need to file this form if this passes to say that you are physically going to go appear before them. It's just a one-page, it should be a one-page form, but it would be public record, yes.
And then, I was just wondering, is this something that other towns do and that we just don't have?
A lot of towns have reemphasized the first part of the ethics bylaw, pretty much, we've looked at a lot of the towns surrounding us and they've adopted at least the state ethics bylaw. This is in the bylaw, the state ethics provisions.
Does everyone have to follow the state ethics provision?
Yeah.
And I remember just as disclosure, I was on the Finance Committee and I had to take the pass.
Yes, and that's true. It's just a reemphasization of it in state law, trans, almost trans.
So that is, so I'm a little confused. So they, all the towns, they have, they kind of follow the state, but do they have?
This is pretty new, this is just, you know, it's for ethics.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else? May I have a quick round of applause?
Four thirty-nine Broad Street, I'd like to move the question.
Question ready to move. All in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The question has been moved. We will now have a vote on Article seventeen. We have a positive motion to approve, so a yes vote. No, this is a positive motion, that is correct. This is the motion by Ms. Crayton, it's a positive motion to approve Article seventeen. Our custom is normally to vote the positive motion first. Just to make sure everybody understands, if you vote yes, you will approve Article seventeen. If you vote no, it will be not approved. Any questions? All those in favor of Article seventeen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The article does not prevail. That concludes our business of the annual town meeting. I will clear that the special town, sorry, the special town meeting of tonight is now adjourned at nine fifty-two, thank you, sorry, eight fifty-two.
Hey, Bill, what's up, buddy? That went quick, that went quick.
That went quick. That went quick.